Good morning and welcome to the November 29, 2011 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Manukin.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here. Can we hear your report, please?
The agenda for the November 29, 2011 special meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed on Wednesday, November 23, 2011, on the Bolton Board outside City Hall. Before you this morning is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding water rate restructuring, one A's motion authorizing GWP to proceed with the issuance of the notice of proposed rate redesign and increase in water rates and charges, Prop. 218 notice, in accordance with the applicable statutory provisions governing same.
Thank you. I will ask anyone who wishes to speak to please turn their cards in now. Mr. Starbird.
Yes, good morning. We are again convened to take up the matter of water rates and water rate restructuring. With that, I'll turn to Glenn Steiger, General Manager at GWP. Glenn?
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Mayor Friedman, members of the Glendale City Council, thank you very much for, again, providing a forum to discuss water rates. I took over the leadership of Glendale Water and Power in very early 2008. Less than a year prior, my immediate predecessor, the interim General Manager at that time, put together a very solid financial and system improvement plan for both the water and electric utilities for Glendale Water and Power. And that was a result of a prolonged period of non-investment in our systems and also no rate increases to go along with that. So our systems needed investment to assure reliability. Reliability had started to decline. And so the plan envisioned a 10-year financial improvement. And we, at that point in time, in late 2007, embarked on that plan. And a series of increases were put into effect. A very, very solid construction plan was also put into effect and included the largest single construction project that the water system has seen. And that was the reconstruction of the Chevy Chase Reservoir, which has since been completed. In late 2008, early 2009, we built a five-year strategic plan around that financial and construction plan and held the best we could to that. And we do that to this day, even though we've seen a significant decline in the economy, which has had impacts on how we operate. So today, with that in mind, we'd like to follow up to the September 30 workshop that we provided, where we looked at a number of options to continue the financial plan that was proposed back in 2007 to assure financial health and physical health of the water utility. Since that last meeting, we've done a few things that we think should make it easier to understand and certainly easier to implement, a series of rate increases along with a bonding to get us to where we need to be within five years. We presented a very similar presentation to the Glendale Water and Power Commission in early October. And as a result of that presentation, the commission, which I believe came to you, did support our, what we call our 3333 recommendation, which we'll go through here today, with an option that we'll also look at today. We have included in today's presentation certain comments and results of questions from the first presentation. And again, we'll show that a little later on. And finally, before we get into the formal presentation, just a word about Proposition 218. We have had a member of the public who sincerely has addressed yourselves and us on the legality of the proposed rate structure, not the revenue increase, but the rate structure, as it relates to Proposition 218. We have had discussions with the member of the public. We've taken it seriously. We've had our consultant look at it. And we've also given it to our city attorney for review. And at this point in time, we feel strongly that the proposal that we are putting forth for a rate restructuring is within the spirit of the law. And if it needs to be discussed, we can discuss it later. Okay, if we can put on the presentation? So what I'd like to do is go right to what we're recommending. And we're recommending to retain a base and variable components of our rate, as we have done basically forever. So we're not recommending a change in the two components, and I'll show in a minute graphically what that looks like. We are recommending a series of 3% rate increases on base rates over the next four years with the progressive rate redesign that you've seen in the past, and again, we'll see a little later on today, that goes into a progressive system that rewards people for conserving water. The future MWD fluctuations in costs will be met through the rate adjustment charge that we currently have. And assuming we get approval and agreement today, we would like your approval to move forward with the Proposition 218 noticing for the redesign of the rate and the multi-year revenue adjustments. And that we would do immediately. We are also requesting a $60 million water bond issuance in early 2012 to then allow us to continue the plan to improve system reliability and put us back on track, as the plan from 2007 showed, with a capital improvement program and ultimately, within five years, transition to a pay-as-you-go, or as we notice here, a Pago system, which allows us, under normal conditions, to pay for our capital improvements without further bonding. Now, I mentioned that what we're proposing is to maintain the fixed and variable pieces of the rate. And essentially, it looks like this. This is what our rate looks like today. And essentially, there's three pieces of that. There is the meter charge, essentially, which is fixed. That's fixed regardless of how much water is used. Then there's the commodity charge, right here. And that's a function of how much water a customer actually uses. But between these two pieces, and that's why you see this line here, these two represent the fixed costs of the utility. They pay for salaries and other O and M and capital-related costs that are not related to the cost of water. This piece here is related to the cost of water either through the MWD charge or through what it costs us to pump water from our own groundwater sources. And so this fluctuates depending-
What do you mean by it? It's not for providing water, the 15 and the 25, for clarification?
This is actually pays for water.
What do the other ones exactly pay for?
Salaries.
1566?
Salaries.
And?
And the cost of maintaining the system through contracts, through materials, construction, everything not related to the actual commodity of water. So what we're proposing-
But I don't understand. You lost me on that. But you said that the red part is the commodity charge.
Correct.
But you're saying that's not related to the commodity of water?
It's called the commodity charge because it varies. It's a function of how much water is used. But it's not paying for the water. It's paying for salaries and paying for operations and maintenance, everything other than the water itself. But the reason it's called the commodity charge is because it does vary based on how much water is actually used. So it's a function of how much water is used, but it's not directly paying for it.
So it's an assessment on non-water costs based on the amount of water that you use?
That is correct. Yes. So we're preparing. And that's the way our rates have been structured forever, basically. And we are not proposing to change that format. So with this, I'd like to turn it over to our rate consultant, Will Dan, who will lead you through the various rate and revenue increase proposals.
Thank you, Glenn. Good morning, Mayor Friedman, and council members of the City of Glendale. My name is Habib Isaac with Will Dan Financial. And I'm going to walk through you the proposed rate redesign and also the revenue increases that Glenn mentioned, as well as the alternative that was discussed with the Glendale Water and Power Commission to bring forward to you for discussion. The one thing I wanted to point out initially is we're primarily going to be focused today on single-family residential, mainly because they're the highest user as a group of water. And if you combine them with multifamily, they use around 80% of the total water in Glendale. So they're residential is going to be the most impacted and be the one affected primarily. We are still using a tiered structure in how costs are incurred and how you recover your revenue from the residential categories. One thing that we did is we wanted to make sure we're in compliance with Proposition 218, which means you basically have to ensure that the rates that you implement are directly related to the costs that are incurred. And knowing that you have different water sources, one being groundwater, the other being purchased water from Metropolitan Water District, we use that to develop the cost of service and the different tiers. There's five tiers, and every single tier has the commodity charge, which means it's the cost of delivering the water to the customers. And that cost is different between the tiers based on the demand that is caused by using more water or having more of a peak demand on the system. So with Tier 1 and 2, it's made up of the commodity charge as well as the production of groundwater. What we found was that the amount of water allocated to Tier 1 and Tier 2 can primarily be served by your groundwater that's available. And groundwater, producing groundwater is cheaper than purchasing water from MWD. When we go to Tier 3, this is where you now are depleting your groundwater, the groundwater that's available, and you now have to turn to MWD to purchase water. So Tier 3 has a blend of those two costs to come up with what is the rate for Tier 3. Tier 4, this is, to get to this amount of usage, you basically need to supplement your water source by using, by purchasing water from MWD. So this is directly related to the cost incurred by purchasing water. And then Tier 5 is still MWD, no groundwater, and then plus the additional demand placed on the additional usage, as well as peaking from the accounts in this tier.
And when I was looking at these, I think you just answered, like, the difference between Tier 1 and Tier 2 is just the amount that the customer uses puts them into one of the two tiers.
Yes.
Same with 4 and 5.
That's correct.
Demand.
Yes.
Individual.
Yes, that's correct. So what does that mean in relation to your existing tiered structure? This is, I want to point out, this has nothing to do with any revenue increase whatsoever. This is simply what is existing today, keeping revenues exactly where they are, and comparing the existing tiered structure compared to our proposed tiered structure. So your existing tiered structure had two tiers, Tier 1 and 2. And what I wanted to point out is with the new rate redesign, your existing Tier 1 is greater than the proposed Tier 1 and Tier 2 rates, primarily because we're focusing on that Tier 1, Tier 2 could be served by groundwater only and doesn't need MET. As you go to Tier 3, now your Tier 2 rate is more than tiers 1 through 3, knowing that Tier 3 has a portion of MWD cost. And then not until you get to the new proposed Tier 4 and Tier 5 is when you start incurring costs that is more than your existing tiers. And again, that's primarily a function of the total amount of demand of accounts in those tiers, as well as relying solely on MWD-purchased water, which costs more than groundwater production. What this new rate design, what it does, it basically meets the objectives of GWP as it relates to ensuring that customers use water efficiently. It also is in compliance with Prop. 218 that we're developing the rates based on costs incurred. And another byproduct of this is that it rewards those that use water efficiently by being able to take advantage of costs that are, costs of water that are at a lower rate, i.e. groundwater versus MWD water.
What happens if those Tier 4 and 5 customers, because of the higher rates they're paying, suddenly start conserving? Then do you pay for the cheaper rates for the people in the lower tiers?
In our analysis, we know that if you have a reduced consumption in those higher tiers, you're also going to have reduced costs, because now you don't have to purchase much from MWD. In addition to that, we also assume in every one of our analyses that because of increased costs, you're going to have a reduction in consumption. So part of our forecasting is to determine what is the reduction, potential reduction in consumption due to increasing costs. So we model that in our analysis, and that is also one of the deliverables that we provide to GWP besides the report for their internal use.
Thank you.
Now, I told you about rates, but what does that mean in relation to customers and their monthly bills? From just rate redesign alone, customers that use anywhere from 3 units of water to 45 units of water would see no impact or a reduction in their bill. What that means, from a seasonal standpoint, in winter, where a lot of single-family homes use less water because you don't have the hot summer, 94% of the accounts, roughly around 21,000 accounts, are going to see their bill reduced by a few dollars. In summer, when now you see an increase in water usage for single-family, there's going to be around 14,000 accounts, 14,900, that will still see a reduction in their bill. But that shift is the fact that there are customers that start using more water for irrigation or weather needs they may have, washing their cars, things of that sort. Looking at this graphically, what this shows, these are two separate trend lines. The blue line is the proposed rate structure. The red line is your existing rate structure. The x-axis is the amount of water used, so number of water units, whereas the y-axis is your monthly bill. So what this shows is, as you go to higher usage of water, you're going to see the trend lines diverge, where the proposed rate structure is going to have a higher cost for those customers compared to the existing rate structure. So basically shifting the cost to where, who is actually causing the increased cost to purchase MET water? Yes, I was going to point that out as well. On the low end, basically, if you're going on vacation and you're not using any water, there is an increase to the cost because the fixed charge is going up from what it is today. And the reason being is because the best management practices is to have somewhere between a 30% to 70% split between what is fixed revenue compared to what is revenue that is collected through the variable rate or the usage of water. So we wanted to make sure we followed that policy to have around 30% fixed compared to 70% that is based on variable usage.
But the initial costs, the base rate that you showed, did not reflect 70% base, actually. It had the fixed cost of $15 and $24?
That was the existing rates. The new rates, which the new monthly bill was made up of, I'll have a slide to show what is the portion of costs associated with fixed and what's the portion of costs associated with the usage of water. So that $15 that you mentioned, that $15 is going up to, it's in exercise around $20. So that's where, that's why at the very far left of this graph, you do also show an increase. But then the band between the two, you see that basically almost mirrors the existing rate structure, where most customers will either not be affected or will have a reduced monthly bill. Now, that's from the customer standpoint. From the utility standpoint, if we keep revenues static where they are, reserves are being depleted, and as this continues to move forward, the utility will continue to run a deficit on an annual basis. This is why we're looking at doing a revenue adjustment of 3% for the next four years. We modeled five years and even up to 10 years for the utility to have available in the model. But based on Prop. 218, the most you could notice is five years. And the city chooses to notice for four years, and if they need to do an increase in year five, then they have to go back out and re-notice the customers that are affected. I wanted to focus on primarily the average user is in Glendale for single-family, which is at 19 water units. As I mentioned, there'll be a minimal impact to monthly bill. Actually, the average user, the monthly bill will go down by roughly $3. And in addition to this, because there's also still that adjustment charge, which is for pass-through based on if MWD increase their rates or power costs go up, that would still apply here. And whether it was on the existing rate structure or the new rate structure, that would still be increased potentially whenever MET increases their rates. MET is, does have a structure now where they have a rate increase in January of 2012. And I just wanted to model that to give you an understanding of what that increase may be. And based on their next increase of 7.5%, what that would do to the bill is that adjustment charge would be 15 cents. So even on the existing, the existing structure that Glenn showed, it was around $1.23. Whenever we submit a new rate design, that gets reset back to zero, because we know what the costs are today, and it's only for future costs. So that gets reset to zero, and that's why it starts at 15 cents for the next one that may be coming up in January. For the utility, the reserves would be funded in the fifth year. So after five years, you will be funding your reserves up to the extent that is considered healthy for the utility. You will likely retain your bond rating. It would also make sure that you could go out for another bond issue in 2012. And then the capital improvement plan is funded with a combination of debt as well as Pago. So not only are we making sure that you could issue the 2012 bond issue, we also are looking at doing a pay-as-you-go for your typical annual maintenance costs that occur for replacements, rehabilitation of the infrastructure. So it's a combination of both. So we're not reliant on having to issue debt all the time. You could pick and choose and make sure the timing makes sense for the utility. This funds not only the short term, but also the long term. Now, looking again from the utility standpoint on the financial outlook, this shows, the bars show that basically what the costs are. The blue bars is your operation and maintenance. The green bar is the debt service. And the red bar is what improvements are being funded through Pago. So just by looking at this trend line and the progression through the years, you'll see that there's definitely a good mix of capital improvements being funded by debt, as well as being funded based on cash that you have on hand in that year, or what has been accumulated through the years, through reserves. The trend lines, you see towards the bottom, the red trend line is your cash balance, and the orange-looking color is what your cash on hand, or basically what's your operating reserves that you have available. Now, besides the recommended, which is 3% across the board for the four years, that we would move forward in the notice, in discussions with the Glendale Water and Power Commission, one thing they wanted to do was come up with a structure of revenue adjustments that would basically make, take into account the current economic climate that we're in for customers, but yet at the same time, still get us to where we want to be in year five. With that, the adjustments here are 2% for the first two years, 4% for year three, and then 5% for year five. What this does for the average user is basically minimal impact in monthly bill, or reduces it by $4 as opposed to $3 with the recommended. But it reduces the revenue increases in the early years because of, again, the economic climate, times are hard right now. And then, but what that does as a byproduct is you're pushing the can down the road, and you have to have higher increases in the later years to make up for that shortfall in the first couple of years. It still achieves, the reserves are funded by year five. But one thing that I cannot guarantee is if your bond rating will still stay where it is today, and also if the market views this as being palatable to issue the bonds that are proposed for 2012. That'd be something that has to be discussed, but with your financial advisors, things of that sort. And again, at the same time, we still have, if it does move forward, the 2012 bond issue, you still have that same combination of a portion of your capital improvements are funded by debt, and a portion of your improvements are funded by pay-as-you-go. Again, here's the financial outlook. You'll see that you still have the same targets, and you have a combination of debt finance and Pago. The only major difference is how, the number of years it takes you or the pace that you get to funding your reserves to the point that is considered healthy for the utility. Now, going back to the customers, which is one of the most important things that we want to consider, what we have here is what is the typical customer's monthly bills based on different usage of water. And on the left side is low usage at 10 units of water, and on the high side is 50 units of water. In the middle, we have the average user that I mentioned is at 19 HCF. Looking at the average user in the middle, the recommended would cause a reduction of $3. And this is where, in the blue, you'll see what the fixed charge is. The fixed charge in existing is 1566, whereas the fixed charge for the recommended is 1947. So that $3 difference or $4 difference is why you saw an increase in that trend line on the far left of if someone didn't use any water. So what this does, it provides, encourages using water efficiently, and it rewards those that do so by taking advantage of the lower costs of your water source that are available to you, of your local sources of groundwater compared to purchased water. And that's primarily the, one of the driving factors for the cost increasing on the high end or on the right, is the fact that that's primarily, primarily is served by MWD water. Yes?
So the person that does conserve, you're rewarding them by charging them the groundwater cost.
Correct.
Those that uses too much, you tell them, okay, you're going to pay for mainly MWD water, which is a higher rate. That's a penalty.
Correct. So it's still based on costs incurred, but is saying who is causing us to have to go out and purchase water, and those are the ones that should be paying for that water. So to summarize the rate redesign, along with the revenue increases, what this does is tiers 1 and 2 are lower than the existing Tier 1 of today. Tier 3, the proposed Tier 3, is lower than the existing Tier 2. And only Tier 4 and 5 is greater than your existing tier structure. Now, I had also mentioned that we did a five-year plan, but we're looking to notice for four years. Looking at this, not only in this upcoming, this upcoming increase for the first year, also looking at the end in 2015, the increase that you'll see in the monthly bills would be around $6.25 for the average user, and for the step-up would be $7.35. So on an annual basis, your monthly bills are going up just under $2 a year monthly, if you analyze that. One thing to notice, too, from the utility standpoint, which on the right side of this bar, is that although you're going to have lower revenue increases in the early years based on the step-up, you'll see that- you'll see that your final rate in 2015, you're actually going to be charged more because you have to do higher increases in later years to make up for that difference. So although you're giving a benefit in the beginning years, at the end of this planning horizon, they're going to be paying more. In addition to that, the revenue or the cash on hand for the utility will be at 11.6 million. It will be more at the recommended of 3% across the board compared to the step-up of the 2% for the first two years and then incremental increases in later years by roughly $300,000. So because of these, because of what this shows, this is why us as the consultant as well as staff is recommending the 3% adjustment for the four years that will be part of the Prop 218 notice. And one thing here, this is a financial outlook. If you say, well, let's not do anything today because of the economy and let's just push it back. If you push it back two years, similar to the step-up of just doing small increases, if you don't have any increase in the next two years, you're going to see significantly higher increases to ensure that you cover your costs and the capital improvements that have to be put in place just for reliability and mandates.
Okay. That's under the assumption that this council is willing to push the can down the road and let a council two, three years from now have to do this or have a capital improvement program that has no money available. So if we have blowouts like Los Angeles, there'd be no money there to fix or for us to continue maintaining. Is that about right?
Yes. You actually have, for unforeseen circumstances, excuse me, right now, you're in a situation where you don't have funds on hand because you've been depleting reserves. So that would continue on for up to two to even three years because even in year three with the first revenue increase, you're just starting to collect revenue to replenish reserves. So, and another thing that you have to be aware of is with this type of plan, you also might violate your bond covenants that exist today based on your 2008 bond issue where you ensure bondholders that you would increase revenues if necessary to ensure that you show the coverage that you disclosed to bondholders back in 2008.
Well, this is the first I hear of it. So we have, so you're proposing to issue another 60 million dollars in bonds, but we are still obligated for the bonds that we issued 2000, when was it? 2008?
Yeah, you have that.
And we have a covenant on that bond saying that we have to increase the rates to pay for those bonds if we're not able to. Is that it?
Bond covenants, all utilities have bond covenants that basically state the provisions that what will the utility, the city, do to ensure that this bond is healthy and things of that sort. So some of the components of that would be.
Are we at that point where the bonds are, where our payments are in question?
No. You, right now, you have sufficient coverage. It is going down from what it was a year ago, two years ago, but you have to show 125% coverage of cash on hand and you do have that. I have to look at exactly where it is today, but I think it's somewhere in 160%, 170%, somewhere around there. But as you move forward, because costs, you have additional costs and depending on what consumption patterns may exist later on, you do have potential that that percentage of coverage could potentially go down through time. I'm not saying that that's ultimately what's going to happen, but you have to be aware of that and you have to keep a close eye on it.
I don't think it's going to happen, but I understand what you're trying to explain in terms of the concept of.
Question, what if it drops to 99%? What happens in a case like that? Not that it's going to, but.
And in that scenario, all bonds have a reserve that is funded. So most likely, you would have to hit the reserve to cover your debt.
We would.
But then you want to try to replenish what was used in the reserve. So with that, I just wanted to make sure I can answer any questions that you may have besides the questions that you asked already before we move to the next section. And I also have two of my colleagues here in case there's very specific questions that they may be able to answer as well.
I do have questions, but I'll hold off till the end.
Okay.
Regarding your report, actually, not your presentation and your base rates and all of that, what you're basing on.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Peter Cavounas, the Assistant General Manager for Water for Glendale Water and Power. Part of the presentation is to answer questions that were raised by your council the last time we presented the need for a revenue increase. One of the questions was, what happens if we have no money for capital? And the obvious answer is we would have to delay or cancel capital projects. Four of the main capital projects that we would delay are shown on this slide. The Adams Hill Main Replacement Project, the Park Manor Reservoir Improvement Project, Glorieta Well Improvements and the Water Energy Management System. The complete list of those projects is in the back appendix of the Willden Report that's been given to you.
Do you have a total for these, the ones that you have up here?
A total in terms of cost?
Yeah.
Yes. The total cost for these four projects is approximately $3.7 million.
Thank you.
It's interesting the way the finances work that these projects include salary costs and they also include overheads and allocations. So canceling these projects does not automatically translate to a $3.7 million savings. Approximately 700,000 of that money would also go toward, would still go toward salaries and benefits. So it actually increases.
How much?
Approximately 700,000 would increase our O&amp;M expense. So the problem isn't necessarily resolved by canceling projects. These projects are probably the largest of those that you would see impacted. Adams Hill Main Replacement is designed to replace pipes in the Adams Hill area that were put in the 20s and the 30s. They're four-inch pipes. There are not enough pipes in all the streets and so our flow and pressure are not adequate at that time, although we do maintain water quality in the system at all times. Park Manor Reservoir Improvement, our standard inspection of the reservoir showed that we have one column that has collapsed. It's a wood roof reservoir. We have eight of those in the system. This is the one that we've identified that we have structural problems with. Glorieta Well Improvements are necessary to continue to be able to pump groundwater from the Verdugo Basin from three Glorieta wells that we have in order to meet upcoming water quality regulations. Improvement is to change the way that water is treated.
What kind of regulations?
It's the surface water treatment rule that requires the water to be treated with chloramines.
How does the treatment of the water tie into the well improvement?
The treatment of the water, changing from chlorine to chloramine makes the residual of the disinfectant last longer in the system and it avoids the formation of trihalomethanes, which are considered a disinfection byproduct. The regulation creates more stringent requirement for disinfection byproducts. So if we don't switch to chloramines, we will have byproducts that exceed the regulation.
And you do that at the wellhead?
We do it at the wellhead, right.
That's the well improvements, it's done at the well.
And if that happens, is there a penalty or a fine? What happens if you do exceed that byproduct?
Our system would not be in compliance. We wouldn't be receiving penalties and violations. Ultimately, we would not be able to pump that water until we would be able to treat that.
The ultimate cost is you couldn't use your well water. You'd be taking more MWD water.
And finally, the Water Energy Management System, we thought was worth highlighting and is shown on this list. This is software, which is a great indication of how technology is helping us do business better. This would allow us to optimize the way we use energy in the system. We believe we can save approximately $200,000 to $300,000 per year off of our energy costs. About 15% to 20% of the total energy bill would be avoided if we were able to purchase this, the software and install it in the system.
Is the cost of the software?
The total cost to purchase the software and install it and make it operational is, including salaries and allocations, is $877,000.
And the salaries, are they for an outside consultant to do it or own IT?
That figure, Mr. Quintero, includes about $40,000 in salaries for our staff. They would be the time they would spend to bring the software onboard and make it operational, make it integrated with the SCADA system.
Rest is a purchase.
Correct. Purchase and working with the vendor.
A question. Adams Hill, what does the fire department think of the water pressure up in that neck of the woods? Does it meet their needs? You said there's four-inch lines.
Yeah, it does not meet their needs.
Or doesn't meet.
It does not mean.
And it's a Class 1 fire department in terms of water pressure, right?
The Class 1 rating comes as a result of an evaluation of the fire department and the water department's ability to work to provide enough flow and pressure throughout the system. That's a numeric rating the city has secured. In this, the fire department also sets standards in terms of flow and pressure and typically they require 2,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI when the fire hydrants are flowing.
And then Adams?
And Adams Hill were considerably below that.
So, well justified then.
Council asked the question of what has the utility done in order to manage through the recent difficult times? And this slide presents some of the service levels, several service level reductions that have had to happen in order to cut our expenses down. So in terms of system maintenance, we reduced the equipment and material used because, again, we have not reduced labor. The equipment and material used to maintain valves, fire hydrants and reservoirs in the system. We have deferred capital projects to future years. These capital projects will need to get done at some point. In order to make the need for revenue increases as manageable as possible, we have deferred capital projects to future years. We have reduced landscaping of facilities. Not necessarily the biggest item. Our total bill for landscaping is now approximately $70,000 per year. About 10 years ago, we were spending double that and starting this year, we cut that in half again and eliminated discretionary overtime from staff. The only overtime we do is in case of emergencies.
Another question. I can't remember all the details, but a few years ago, a major line burst up Kenyatta near Oakmont Country Club. And it took us hours literally to shut off. Perhaps because it had to be done manually and they're all old. And I think there was talk at the time of eventually replacing those so they could be done from within the city, just shut them off immediately. That factored in here in terms of system maintenance, valves, whatever? Is that where that kind of a thing is?
It is. Our system maintenance program is designed to go to each valve at least every other year. We have close to 9,000 valves in the system and we try to turn them every two years, turn each valve every two years, make sure that it's still working. So when we need to do a shutdown, we guarantee that the valve will know where it is, will know how many turns it takes to close it and that it will close at the end. And as part of capital improvement would be to motorize valves and control them remotely, initially at a few select locations and eventually more and more throughout the.
That's not factored into what you're showing us here?
Correct. The deferred maintenance was the actual turning and exercising of valves and the maintenance of fire hydrants. In addition to reducing service levels, in answer to the question of what have we done to contain costs, presented this slide to show you, again, with the three major inputs that go into any business, labor, materials and energy. In terms of labor, you're very well aware of the salaries for city staff have not increased. The employees have contributed toward the increases for retirement and for health costs. And the cost-sharing agreements with the employee associations address increases in pension costs. In terms of materials, we looked at the way we do business and we do that on a regular basis. But it's worth noting that we have consolidated contracts for services, either within GWP between water and electric or between GWP and other city departments. And some examples are shown on this slide. Paving, which is a big expense. Water quality laboratory, which is an expense that we got a better price on by partnering with Burbank and Pasadena to have our water quality lab testing bid jointly. I mentioned landscaping as well as the fleet consolidation, which we expect will save us money. We've reissued bids for all the parts and supplies, which is a big piece of our material expense. And we've instituted a contractor pre-qualification process for large contracts, which invites contractors to submit their qualifications and financial standing before they're actually allowed to submit a bid. That makes for better bids, a much more competitive process. The serious contractors apply and they know they'll get a fair shot. They won't get underbid by an unqualified contractor. So it gives us better prices and better contractors to work with. In terms of saving for energy, we test every two years all our pumping units, whether they're wells or pumps in the system. We test them for efficiency and we improve the ones that drop below a certain threshold. In addition to that, I mentioned the software that we're looking to purchase. And there's a nice synergy between that software because it understands, it takes the input of which pumps are more efficient. And when there's variable pumping to be done, it uses the more efficient pumps automatically. So it drives the savings in energy in that regard. Another question asked by council was regarding staffing at the water department. This is a slide that was shown earlier, I believe, as part of the budget a few months ago. And it describes the staffing for the water department. And you see the total staffing of 101 full-time equivalents. This is staffing for the water department that does the core work along with the other portions of GWP that provide support. For example, the IT department, human resources and so on, that are positions that get allocated on a proportional basis. The core water department is 72 employees. That headcount has not changed in the last seven and a half years.
How many of those positions are frozen positions?
Frozen in the sense.
That they're not, they're vacant positions that are not being hired currently?
We have five of those.
Which are reflected in the 72?
Which are reflected, well, it's between the technical professional and non-management, those five are spread in those.
Where would that fit in with electric, water or public benefit?
Those five positions are water positions only. And so it's, those five are spread between what you see as a 22.75 and 72.47. There's five FTEs.
So basically, it's in the 101, out of the 101, there's five that are not.
Correct.
That are currently vacant.
Correct.
And not being recruited for. And not being recruited for.
And not being recruited for, yes. In terms of dollars, this translates, as you can see, to a total payroll of $7,984,000. If I can go back to the slide before for one second. The question, I believe the question was, how many of the employees are management? How many are non-management? And the breakdown you see there is six out of the 101, which we believe is a pretty good ratio, pretty competitive. Slide 22 shows you the total payroll of $7,984,000. And this is kind of an interesting way to compare. If you're looking at any real reductions in the operations and maintenance budget of the water utility, this is probably where the reductions would have to come from. And so if you think of it in terms of employees and dollars, about every $80,000 that we need to cut would mean one position that would have to be eliminated.
The $7,900,000 includes the five positions that you just mentioned. This is the budgeted amount, not necessarily the actual amount that would be incurred currently.
Correct.
And do you have any idea how much the five positions would cost?
Eighty times.
I would be guessing.
Four hundred thousand?
I would be guessing about 350,000 in salaries.
Okay.
And Peter, your total water budget is how much?
The water budget for salaries is.
No, no, the total water operation budget.
Approximately 50 million.
How much, 15?
50.
Five oh?
Total water system expense for this year, sorry, I misspoke, 62 million.
Okay. How much is that for water?
That's for water.
For actually purchasing MWD water?
Uh, about 15 million of that is purchased.
One five?
One five.
That's relatively a smaller percentage than I thought it would be actually.
That's purchasing outside water.
That's purchasing.
Not including the cost of our pumping our groundwater, purifying, all of that.
Correct. The energy cost is approximately two and a half to $3 million, depending on demand in particular year.
So what are the other expenses? Let's say the other $40 million.
Yeah, in addition to salaries, we have, um, the, um, debt for the bond. We have salaries, of course, materials, equipment and overheads and allocations.
So pumping, the energy costs? He's, are you asking about the cost outside of purchasing water?
Uh, right. Well, he said, uh, purchasing MWD, well, MWD water is 15 million. The energy cost is about 3 million, let's say 20 million for, for the water. Then they have approximately $8 million in salaries, which, which just, so that's about, let's say 30 million. What is the other 30 million that we're spending in the water? That's the question.
Materials, equipment, uh, debt service, which is about two and a half million right now for the 2008 bond and allocations from the city.
For $30 million allocated?
Well, to, to bring out the total to 62.
Repairs, does that all fall into that same area?
Yeah, repairs, you can look at it as either a type of, um.
Does that include capital improvements?
Or, um, excuse me, one second. Repairs, you can look at it as a type of activity or a type of expense. If you look at it as labor, material and equipment, uh, the answer is broken out that way. Mr. Manukin, your question?
She said repairs. I was wondering, capital improvements, it kind of falls in the same thing as, does that, is it, uh, is it capital improvements as well included in that 30 million or is it?
Can I give you a consistent answer? Yeah. The, um, total water system expenses is 62 million, 62. Of that, the operating expense is 31 million.
Okay.
And the capital for 1112 is 23.5.
That makes more sense because we just, uh, you just built the Chevy Chase reservoir for about 30 million, didn't we? So that cost is in there as well.
Well, Chevy Chase is not included in 1112 because it was completed the year prior. But it includes other expenses, for example, our completion of the meter replacement program, uh, completion of SCADA.
Okay. So the smart meter, you mean you're talking about the smart meter completion program?
Yes, that's part of that 20, total of 23. Purchased water for, uh, the 1112 year. Give me one second, John. I was saying 15. So the budget has it at 15,84,000.
It's budgeted for 2010, 2011 for 12,711,000?
That was for 1011, yeah.
1011, right. I don't have the 1112 budget on, with me.
So if there are no other questions, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Steiger.
Have you been timing us with that?
That's a five-minute timer. This is, this is our high-tech shower timer. I was going to show it to you in a few minutes, but since you brought it up.
Well, I know what it is because I have one in my shower. So I was wondering what you were, if you were timing us with it.
We would have long exceeded it. I would like to summarize however. The reasons for the recommended revenue adjustments, and that, just to review, uh, is the four-year at 3% per year, is first to restore our cash reserve balances by year five. The opportunity to retain our bond ratings, to provide the ability to borrow for capital needs and to provide a pay-as-you-go funding moving forward. The recommended 3% for four years will do this. Uh, if we were to go to the lower optional, uh, step-up formula, uh, what that would do is, uh, give us insufficient cash reserve balances, uh, for a longer period of time, possibility of a likely reduction in bond ratings. It may make it difficult for us to borrow in the future. Uh, clearly we'll delay, uh, needed capital improvements and we will also, because of that, uh, have to reduce cap, uh, O and M expenditures. And then finally, if we do nothing and keep revenue as it is, uh, we will clearly have an insufficient cash reserve, uh, which will only get worse. Uh, we, our bond ratings will most likely suffer. Uh, we will have an inability to borrow. We will no longer be able to, uh, issue, uh, bonds. We won't, uh, fund capital projects. The projects that you heard Peter talk about, among others, uh, will be deferred or canceled. And clearly because of that, uh, that will also flow over into our O and M. Therefore we'll have, uh, very, very, uh, highly curtailed reductions in O and M, which will result most likely in layoffs. Uh, Peter gave you a sense as to where we are and what it costs for our labor. And keep in mind, and, and I think it became apparent as Peter spoke about the budget, that the, uh, the driver of our budget is not labor costs. Uh, our labor costs are less than 20% of our total budget, uh, which is quite different than most, most city departments. So it is a little bit different for us when we look at what our drivers are. So I did want to mention, uh, a few water savings, uh, methods that we continue to provide our customers. As you know, over the past number of years, uh, our customers have been, uh, very, very cooperative in conserving water. Just on our, uh, our voluntary conservation program, customers conserved over 10%. When we asked for mandatory restrictions, they conserved over 18%. So our customers have responded well, uh, to our programs and we continue to offer programs that will help customers save water and thereby save money. Uh, just to, to name a few, Smart Home surveys, which offers customers in-home energy and water surveys, and we install up to $50 worth of conservation materials. Rebates, which rebate, uh, water conserving dishwashers, clothes washers, efficient pool pumps and efficient toilets. Uh, we've had a series and continue to have a series of highly successful water-saving landscape, landscape classes. Uh, in many cases, they've been oversubscribed. Uh, we do three-hour classes through, uh, March through October and we'll be resuming those classes again this February. We have a smart business program, which provides up to $2,000 worth of water-saving devices. Uh, should customers install artificial turf in their backyards, they would save approximately a dollar a month on watering that they'd no longer have to water, uh, the normal grass. And if customers, uh, put in drought-resistant landscaping, that would equate to roughly about a dollar 20 per month on that same 100 square foot patch. So there are a number of ways, uh, for customers to save money and of course, there's many others beyond this.
But in the event that, um, someone is watching at home, um, what are some of the numbers attached to rebates in terms of dishwashers, clothes washers? Is it a hundred dollars, 50?
Yeah, it, it ranges anywhere from about 25 to approximately a hundred dollars in that range, depending upon the efficiency and so on. And, uh, so it's in that range.
I know, you're, oh, sorry.
How do they apply? They contact GWP?
They do that through the dealer, yes.
And there's also rebates from MWD as well, correct? Direct to the consumer? Just so people know, with some of these high-efficiency appliances, you can get a rebate from the city of Glendale and you can also get a rebate from Metropolitan Water District.
That's correct.
So if you buy an appliance, be sure you check for all of the rebates. And some of the dealers, I know when I bought my clothes washer at Sears, they had all the forms and they could tell me all the rebates that were available on that particular model.
And if there's any question, certainly, uh, contact us, contact our, uh, Public Benefits Department. And just some of the other things, as you know, we issue a monthly newsletter known as The Source and just about in every single newsletter, we offer various, uh, water-saving tips and I just, uh, show a few of them up here, uh, in terms of some of the things we've done, but it's constant and we, we continually put, uh, ways of saving water and also energy, uh, in The Source. And, uh, just to give you an example, in the past year, we participated in over 40 community events. Uh, we give things away like this, as, as you noted. Uh, and this is even though it's not high-tech at all, it's, it's quite effective in, um, in holding showers to five minutes, uh, or less, which can save quite a bit of water. Uh, we, uh, we have the Water for Tomorrow magazines. We issue calendars with water-saving tips, uh, brochures that show, uh, ways to conserve water. We issue our yearly water quality report, um, and children's water conservation activity books. These are just a few of a number of, uh, methods that we use to help customers conserve water. Uh, our customers have responded well. We believe that the rate structure that we're putting, uh, forth here will help to even bring that further, uh, given the fact that the sustainability of water in Southern California is a high priority. We believe this is the next prudent step to take. With that, we'll entertain questions.
I have a question. I know this is a big question, but since I know it's going to come up, I wonder if you can talk a little bit about the economics of the smart meters? It's a very big expense, something that was noted, I think today in the Glendale News Press as being one of the reasons for having to do a rate increase. Can you talk about the economics of that and how and whether that eventually leads to cost savings for the utility and for the consumers and how all of that works?
Good question. I appreciate that. Uh, let me, let me be very specific as to on the water side. Uh, the expenditure on the water side, as we've noted numerous times, was about $20 million for the, for the water smart grid. A good portion of that, uh, probably somewhere in the, in the range of 12 to 14 million, had already been planned to replace the meters anyway. Many of the water meters were very, very old and we had, uh, we had expected to replace our water meters regardless of whether we made them smart or not. So a good portion of that would have been expended, uh, in the same timeframe anyway. What the smart grid does on the water side is a number of things. It's first of all, it makes, uh, makes it a much more accurate measurement of how much water's being used. It measures it in near-real time and by near-real time, it's on an hourly basis. So if a customer wants to see, uh, how much water they're using in near-real time, they can do that. They'll have the ability momentarily, by the way, to go in and look at their account to see how much water's being used. If in fact, as we've done with a number of customers, uh, already there's a leak, uh, the customer, if we don't find it for them, which we've been doing quite regularly now, uh, they'll find it themselves just by looking, uh, on their account. And leaks are, are fairly common. So that will help the customer not only save water, but save money in doing so. Uh, and then the types of applications that will ultimately be, uh, integrated to this, uh, the smart grid, uh, system will help customers, uh, be able to understand, use water more efficiently. Uh, so ultimately we expect probably from just the smart meters alone, somewhere about 5 to 7% of a reduction in water, uh, much higher on the electric side. But on the, on the water side, we expect it to be quite efficient.
So when do you expect that $20 million investment to be paid back?
Approximately five years.
And then those savings would, would continue after those five years?
They, they are ongoing savings, yes.
Which related to that, the consumer, the household is responsible for the water line from the street on into the house.
That's correct.
So if you saw leaks in your faucet and stuff, yeah, you might notice that, but if you had a leak between the city and the house, it was broken or leaking, you'd never know that unless you had a smart meter where all of a sudden you, where's this leak? I see nothing in the house.
That's correct. Yeah, we, we, the smart meter, uh, monitors everything from that meter all the way into the house, including the service line that you're, uh, referring to. So now we pick up those leaks, which in many cases can go on for years in half.
Now I had that problem under the house where it happened to go down, there was a lake in my, underneath my floor, the lake there because an underground pipe had rusted out. And I didn't know until I walked in, but usually you don't find it like that.
Now you can.
Karen?
Question, Mr. Steiger. Let's go to slide 12. Okay. So I'm a little confused with the numbers. Mr. Manukin asked what the total expenditures of the department was and he said 62 million. And this graph showed it at 42 something. So is there something that's not included in that?
I'm going to ask Habib.
Yes, uh, this is rolling up a lot of the capital improvements into the proposed debt issuance of 2012 that recommended. It assumes that the 2012 debt issue would be viable and then it's absorbed into the debt service, which is the green bars.
No, I understand the green is a debt service, but there was a $62 million figure that was given.
Yeah, so it's capital improvements have been rolled into the $60 million debt issue and then you just have the annual payment. And in early years, you're, you're capitalizing interest. So then the payments are substantially lower in the first couple of years for your debt payments.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand that one.
There's, there's a simpler answer to that. This does not include the cost of MWD water because that's a pass-through. So this is, this, yeah, so that's, and that is the difference.
Okay. At 15 or 16 or?
Correct, correct.
My next question is, um, and on the, you gave us a list of the capital improvements that we needed to do. Adams Hill, Maine, Park Manor, et cetera, the software. And there was a figure given of, uh, what was it? Seven million for all that?
I believe it was 3 million.
3 million, it was even a smaller amount. But what are those huge red bars then in year 15, 16, 17? I mean, it says it's a capital projects, um, and those look to be about $10 million chunks each one. So what are, are we? I want to make sure, and, and the reason I'm asking this is when we're justifying a rate increase, I don't want to inflate, uh, expected or potential, uh, capital projects that we don't have on our books yet. You gave us a list of five modest projects. Are we not overestimating what we would need for capital projects in the future?
Senator Jerry, and we don't believe so. We, we have a 20-year forecast on our capital program and we have, the heaviest capital year is this one coming up. It's about $23 million, uh, capital program, which would be funded by the bond proceeds, which is why it's not shown, I believe is not shown on this graph. Because what would be shown on the graph would be the debt service. You can only show the expense one time, otherwise it would be double counting. But as we move out into the future, we're starting to pay for capital projects from retained earnings, from, from proceeds from the business. And those are shown in the red. So what you're seeing in the red is the projected capital, which we think will be approximately a steady $10 million a year, uh, in at least the timeframe that you see here, which is the next 10 years. And a lot of that money, the bulk of it, is for main replacements throughout the city. Main cleaning and lining, which is cheaper, and main replacement throughout the city.
Is it that expensive? I mean, the Adams Hill Maine was a million dollars or so and?
Uh, the, no, the Adams Hill Maine, yeah, it was about 1.1, a little bit more than 1. It was 1.6. Uh, but it depends on the, on the footage. We have, um, we have about 25 miles of, of pipe in the city that needs to be cleaned and lined and/or replaced. So, so you're correct. We are looking at approximately $10 million of capital per year, kind of on a long-term basis. And that's what we think we can deliver as an organization. Uh, we, we don't think we could deliver much more than that. Um, and we think that's what, what is needed on a long-term basis.
Okay, my next question is on the tiers. And I understand we have numbers for them and we have names for them, but who are these tiers? and we have names for them, but who are these tiers? Who is a tier one, or a tier two, or a tier three, a tier four, a tier five? I mean, let's put faces on these tiers so we, so I can get a better idea as to who's going to be paying a lesser rate in the initial year or so, and who's going to be paying that extra, that higher rate. So who are they?
Sure, it's based on usage. And in the tier one is allotment of roughly five units of water. Tier two is around 10.5 units of water, and then tier-
So give me a, sort of paint a picture for me.
Sure.
Grandma and grandpa in their one-bathroom, two-bedroom bungalow. I mean, is that-
Right.
-the tier one, and then?
Yeah, to paint a picture, the average user is going to fall in tier three, so, which is 19 units of water. The single, the person that lives by themselves will most likely be in tier one, maybe tier two, but both those tiers are groundwater primarily.
These are single-family residences only?
It's a single-family residence.
People who live in a condo or a single-metered multi-unit residence?
Right, because of the number of multifamily units that are within the City of Glendale, we set up a separate customer class for them.
What tier are they?
Multifamily has three tiers, and those tiers are on the same basis of the density factors of multifamily compared to single-family, and amount of water or indoor versus outdoor.
Are we dealing with that today? Is that one of the issues before us as well, the multifamily? I haven't heard anything about the multifamily.
Right.
Which constitutes more than half of the housing units.
60%. Yes, multifamily is also tiered in the same structure, in a similar fashion as single-family.
But I got you off track. So the average household, husband and wife, 2.2 kids, whatever that number is, I don't know if that's, is a tier three, about 19 units?
Right, that average household, if they use 19 units of water, they're going to be saving around $3 a month, based on the proposed rate redesign, with the 3% revenue increase.
Do they have a lawn? I mean, are we factoring modest landscaping usage as well?
We assume, we have parcel data for the City of Glendale, so we were able to look at single-family land uses to determine what is the average irrigable area for your typical single-family lot.
Up to tier five then, which is the greatest user, many people in the house, or much-water usage, large landscaping usage.
Or just discretionary, you know, they wash their cars on the driveway.
Showers.
Long showers, right. They always wash their dishes every day, or whatever the case may be.
For those tier five, since 80% of the water is used outside of the home, I'm assuming it's not even so much the number of people living in the household as it is the water they're using for irrigation. Is that correct?
A primary driver of additional water usage could be, you know, more landscaping or elaborate landscaping, but that's not the only driver. It depends on, you know, it could be more people, it could be the fact that they take longer showers, whatever the case may be.
But I'm just saying that it's not necessarily, it doesn't necessarily follow that if you have five people in your household or six people, that you're going to be in tier five. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be that way, depending on your water usage.
Right, depending on your water habits, that's correct. But what it does say is that you're going to be using water above what the typical single-family home is, or what their needs are, which is what we modeled these tiers based on, was the typical single-family residence.
So talk, I know that it's in your report, it wasn't in the PowerPoint, just so the public understands. If you can go back and talk a little bit about the commercial multifamily rate structuring. You can talk about how this, the new rate structure will impact their bills, the average person bills.
Sure. With multifamily, it's three tiers, and what we did there was look at the amount of water for a base allocation, where we took the typical density factor of multifamily times 55 gallons per day, which is a base allocation of water. That one is around five units of water. Then we looked at, you know, what is just considered efficient use on a per-unit basis. And then we came up with allotment, which was around 10 units of water. From that point forward, because multifamily doesn't really have outdoor usage or additional needs similar to single-family, there's just a tier three that is a capture-all for anything above and beyond that. There'll be some master meters that are not only serving the units, but also serving common areas, things of that sort, for outdoor needs. So those type of meters or usage of water would be, will land in the tier three. One thing we did do, however, with multifamily, was to ensure that there's equity between a small complex versus a large complex, we also are incorporating the number of units within the complex, to determine what is the amount of water allocated for tier one, tier two. So to ensure that a complex that has 100 units has an appropriate allocation of water compared to a complex that just has 10 units.
In your, did you say some people wash their dishes every day, so they don't save water?
I just gave an example of-
So I don't, I wash them once a week, and I just reuse them as I, as I-
[laughing]
In your, in your initial analysis, in your classifications, in the report that was presented, you had, on, let me see, page, you had a number of classifications that was kind of compacted into four classifications and your water rates.
Correct.
Why, why did you go from how many clas, and I'm on page eight of the report, and I'm looking at the table, water consumption characteristics by billing class, why'd you go from, it looks like, I haven't counted it, 10, 11, 12, whatever it is, billing classes to four?
Sure. What we wanted to do is primarily focus on usage patterns for water. These are the existing billing classifications for GWP, but it's not just focused on water, it's also focused on characteristics for electric use. So it's not directly correlated only to water. And even though there's this-
But you have, you have, you have all the numbers regarding average month, peak month. Does that, does that include electric use as well, or is it just water, the table itself?
No, this is-
It's just water?
This is water.
So we do have, we can separate them out in these classifications based on water usage, as opposed to the four that you're proposing?
There is for, potential for that, but at the same time, just keep in mind, your existing rate structure only has one, even though you have this billing system, you only had one tiered structure, one structure that applies to all customers. And there wasn't a different structure for every different billing classification.
But aren't you, don't you have a different tiered structure for multifamily than single-family?
Yeah, we're grouping them to light categories, and then based on that, we're coming up with a structure based on the demand, these new categories placed on the utility.
And where's public authority? I know it's a very small, what, who is public authority? Is it the City of Glendale?
Yes.
Because you have City of Glendale up above, on the chart.
Public authority could be other government agencies as well, such as school, things of that sort.
Is there, where's the school district? Is the school district in this category anywhere?
In the proposed, there'll be under commercial.
Oh, no, in the, in the prior.
I would have to go and look up that specific account to see.
I'm sure it's not public authority, because it only shows average month of 143, what is it, HCF that you're using? Is that what it is?
I could, I could get that information for you.
And does the, and you have the calculations for average month and peak month?
Yes.
Peak month is the total amount, right, of the usage? It's not, it's not the incremental charge, the incremental charge to the average month?
Peak is the highest demand they place-
So it's the total for that month?
In comparison to their average usage. So how much do they peak above their average consumption?
So the peak month, if we look at City of Glendale on the first line, so on the peak month, their total usage is 23,000 plus the 13,000, the total, or the 23 includes the 13?
No, the peak month is, is the total usage.
Total usage, so it includes the 13.
Yeah, and then-
So it's the average plus, so there's an incremental 10,000 units that is being used in addition to the, to the average.
And that's how we calculate the peak of 1.7?
Right, you're calculating over, the 1.7 is over the total, it's not the incremental usage.
It's the peak in comparison to the average.
Let's explain this to me again. The City of Glendale, the first line, you have 13,000 average, average units per month.
Correct.
And on the peak month, it's 23,500.
Correct.
How is the 1.7% calculated?
So the 1.7 is, what is the amount related to peak in comparison to the average use for that category?
So tell me which numbers you've divided to come up with 1.7%. So I would think that the peak is 1.7 of the total?
Yes, it's 1.7% of the total system peak.
Right, okay.
Yes, sorry.
All right.
Okay, if there's no more questions from the council at this time, I'm going to go on to the public, and then we'll come back for, I'm sure, more questions and comments. Thank you very much. My first card is Herbert Milano, to be followed by Mike Mohill.
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. The purpose of today's ordinance is to redesign the water rates and increase fees to customers of Glendale Water and Power. It is my contention that any proposal should have the following characteristics. It should be fair, it should be equitable, it should be sustainable to the environment, it should be reliable with regard to infrastructure, it should be prudent. And I think that any system should be, that is proposed to you, should answer those questions with clarity. But it is my contention that in this particular report, we don't have that level of clarity. So I would challenge any of you to basically come in and explain, in your words, the way these rates are truly being implemented. And if you can't, I don't think that you can make a decision like that today. It is, this goes beyond complexity, it goes to the point of being complicated in the way that it's being presented. I pity the programmers who are going to try to implement this type of rate structure, let alone ourselves try to explain to the general public how it really works. It is my contention that no reasonable person could be expected to make a significant decision for increases in rates when you don't have the basic financial statements of the city available. The city's fiscal year ended on June the 30th. We don't have, as of today, those financial statements, neither for the city as a whole, nor for the Glendale Water and Power. So I must suggest that you postpone this decision until the public is able to get all that information clearly before us to understand what the impacts are. There are many issues that in three minutes, it makes it almost impossible to explain, but I will explain a couple of things that should be clear. The rates should be fair. You're now using particular rate structures where the average usage per gallon, those 19 HCFs, Mr. Jarien, come out to about 474 gallons per day per household. And then if you're going to apply a rate of 55 gallons per person for apartment dwellers, that rate structure will come out to 154 gallons for that household. So an apartment dweller, we've got a rate of about 154 gallons a day. The structures for the HCF at 19 averages 474 gallons per day. Two households, two different structures, two different demands. And I don't know if it really complies fully with the concept of a structure that is fair. There are many more issues that I wish I had the time to explain to you and bring back, including some of the history that basically puts us in this particular precarious financial situation today.
Mike Mohill, to be followed by Richard Espirito.
Good morning, Mayor Friedman, council members, and the viewing public. My name is Mike Mohill, longtime resident of Glendale. Why is this most important issue being discussed at 9:30 a.m. this morning, rather than at 6 p.m., so the public can see, can have a better opportunity to speak at this meeting? Is this the way the mayor wants to control this agenda item? The majority of the proposed water rate increases coming before the council will be on the fixed cost, which is the water customer charge located on page three of our GWP bill. Water customer charge is the water line to a resident's home and the administrative cost. In 2007, water customer charge was $14.30, and today it is $31.32. The rate has more than doubled in just four years. If a resident does not use any water, one's future bill will still go up, because the fixed water customer charge, this has nothing to do with water conservation. Water rate increases, in 2007, water rate increases was nine, excuse me, was 9%; in 2008, 14%; in 2009, 12%; and November 10, 3.8%. Even though the Glendale residents during the drought months saved over 18% in water consumption. Total water rate increases since 2007 is 38.8% uncompounded. Now the city is again proposing to increase our water rates 15% uncompounded by 2016. The 38.8% water rate increase since 2007, plus a proposed 15% rate increase, will increase our water rates 50.8% by the year 2016. The issue also before us is how we've squandered the millions of dollars in bond money that this GWP has spent. Just for example, in 2001, there was about $250 million in the GWP reserve account to deal with stranded investments, like contracts with different power plants. As with the GWP, was going through deregulation. Since deregulation never went through, what happened to that money? In 2006, the GWP issued a bond for $38 million, and in 2008, two bonds totaling $110 million were issued for infrastructure. The issue is how we are managing our money, and the ratepayers are getting it through the nose. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you. Richard Espirito, to be followed by Harry Zabos.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I am Richard Espirito. A lot of my questions were answered this morning, however, I'm going to have to go home and use my hand calculator. So I'm going to address two separate issues. One is the Adams Hills project, and it was stated by staff today that those pipes were put in in 1920. Why does it take till now to decide that we need to have that improved? In the capital improvement projects, four of them deal with water purification. 40% of our water, according to the staff report, comes from groundwater. The EPA did studies regarding chromium 6. My question is this, how often is our water actually tested for groundwater? Not only are we concerned with bacteria, which we talked about this morning by the staff, with the use of chloramine rather than chloride, but what about things such as chromium 6 in arsenic? I could give some arsenic to Mr. Kozakian there. He could probably survive, but if I gave that same quantity of arsenic to Yasmin Beer's youngest child, that would kill him. What are we doing regarding those elements? And I do know- And I do know how often they're being, how often is our water actually tested? Is it done monthly? Is it done weekly? I know there is an annual report and we did say, staff said that we combined that testing with the city of Burbank and the city of Pasadena. Who is doing that testing? No mention as to who this organization is and what are their qualifications? So I respectfully request the Department of Water and Power to give me the reports for the last three years on the quality of water here in the city of Glendale. And I'd like to know who this company is and everybody else can talk about the prices. I'm concerned with the quality of water, of which we drink here in the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Thanks. At the end of public comment, I'll ask staff to respond to how often the water is tested and by whom. Harry Zabos to be followed by Aram Kazazian.
Councilman, my name is Harry Zabos. I'm a citizen of Glendale and I will give you prepared written comments to the report itself. I'd like to talk today about the condition of GWP water. Clearly, over the years, that financial condition has been depleted and brought us to a crucial point, which I don't dispute in terms of need for resources, financial resources. All the time that this financial condition was being depleted and being drawn down, the city was transferring millions of dollars from GWP water to the general fund. And it was doing so pursuant to the charter, but it was doing so in violation of the charter. The charter provides that at the end of any given year, once GWP water has taken care of, gotten all of its revenue, taken care of all of its obligations and needs, if there is any surplus, then that surplus goes to a surplus fund. And then it is out of that surplus fund that it's transferred to the general fund. That's not what has been going on by the city. What they've been doing is making the transfer a line item in the actual budget of GWP waterworks. So it's not been a matter of a transfer or surplus funds, it's a line item. In addition to that, the charter provides that you don't transfer those funds if it's out of the surplus fund if it's going to jeopardize the waterworks. Well, clearly, we've been transferring those funds to the general fund and clearly, those financial resources were necessary for GWP water. They were jeopardizing the financial condition of GWP water, otherwise we wouldn't be here with these serious needs. Now, the city stopped doing those transfers this year, but not because they are violating the charter, but because of Proposition 218. And one might say pardon the pun, it's water under the bridge, we are where we are. My problem is that I believe that the city is still transferring GWP funds, water funds, to subsidize and support general fund obligations. Now, I have given to the city attorney, and he assures me he will give it to you, a three-page document that outlines ways in which GWP water funds are going to subsidize general fund operations. And before we start talking about restoring the financial condition of GWP by raising rates on ratepayers, what we ought to do is plug all those instances in which GWP water funds are going to take care of general fund obligations. And when the city attorney assures me he'll give it to you, plus his responses to it, that you'll carefully look at that. And before you have a rate increase, you will address those kinds of transfers.
Thank you, Aram Kazazian is my last card.
Aram Kazazian, you know, there's a lot of issues in here and I don't think we can resolve this today, it looks like. Number one, no more bonds, pay as you go, that's what we need. So we don't want to look another $60, $120 million bond for next year, let's forget that. Don't even think about bonds. Get that off your books, don't even think about it. Now, we borrowed money to do repairs of infrastructure, we got a bond. The same slides that Peter Covano showed, he showed it over here at council three years ago, the same thing. And then he showed it again last year when we got a 15.08% increase, not 3.8%. 3.8 was only on the first phase, on tier one. The tier two got a 15.08% increase. That's what the increase was. They keep talking 3.8, that's not accurate. I went down to DWP, sat down at their table, I said, here's the bill, what will be my increase on this bill? It says 15.08%, not 3.8. And I have those documents. So let's not do that anymore. Let's not kid the public, we know, you know, GWP, we have no trust on them anymore because they don't tell the truth. And the Weldon Report, they have to tell you what they're told to tell you. That's all they're doing. Now, you know, we have $1.7 million in collections of money on the DWP and the people cannot pay. And you want to increase that because you want to get the people out of this city, you want to get the poor people that cannot afford it, you want to kick them out of the city. We don't want them, right? Is that what, is always the city council saying, okay, $1.7 million people cannot pay, let them go to another city where they can afford it. We want to hit them harder, we want to hit them harder so they can vacate the places. That's kind of, you know, I don't want to use any improper language at this time, but anyway. Okay, now, I have a question on it. When you have a commercial building, say a restaurant, let's take Sheik's Restaurant, okay, they use a lot of water. So what is, what they're going to fall under? They're going to fall under tier five? Is that what they're going to pay at the highest rate of water where they have to increase their, you know, their menu prices, where people cannot go eat and they're going to close their restaurant down? Or is this going to happen to other restaurants? Now, there's a lot of you over here, some of you have apartment buildings, they said, okay, three-tier system, I'm looking at the three-tier system. So that means they're going to pay what? What rate? We don't have any of that information. It's not, it's not clear. This report doesn't give me any clarity. I'd like to give you, maybe we'll pull 10 different people's bills and have them analyze those bills and tell us what's going to cause the people to do that.
Thank you very much.
Sample bills, thank you.
Okay, before I ask GWP to respond to Mr. Aspiritu's questions about water testing, for Mr. Kazazian, he may have missed that part, but commercial does not have the tiers, correct? So there's no tiering for a restaurant, so that doesn't change. Okay, do you want to answer the question about the purity, just for the folks listening at home and for Mr. Aspiritu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The issue of water quality is better described as follows. GWP staff collect samples throughout the system. We have 16 sampling stations throughout the distribution system where we collect samples and we also collect samples at each and every one of our reservoirs. And all told, in a year's time, we collect about 4,500 samples to make sure that the water is potable and meets all standards. When we collect these samples, these samples get sent to a lab, Montgomery Watson Harza Lab. That is an outside service and that service, we bid for their best prices by joining with Burbank and with Pasadena, where we presented to them, we asked for a price for them to do the analysis for samples for all three cities at the same time. And they gave a better price than they would have given if we asked as Glendale alone. They're a certified lab in the state and we trust, we fully trust their analysis and results. And we portray those results in an annual water quality report. That report by law has to be printed by the end of June for the prior calendar year. So by the end of June in 2011, we produced a water quality report that was sent to every resident in Glendale. We've done that each and every year and we'd be happy to give Mr. Aspiritu or anybody else as many copies of last year's or years past as he would like, but rest assured that he, as well as all other residents, have received them at home.
So you're testing every day?
Pretty much every day, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go to council.
Ask one more question, Mr. Gunnis. To my recollection, this city was, for the most part, developed in the 20s, 30s, 40s, pretty much to what I can remember. I mean, we've added annex to whatever. What percentage of our water lines, for instance, were put in during that time period? More than 50%, I presume?
I don't have that exact figure. That is a subject that I have shown you in the past. My guess is that if you were to look at it today based on the replacements we've made the last few years, about 40% of the pipe that's in the ground is still 20s and 30s vintage pipe.
Ready for replacement.
Yeah, and that would mean that it's unlined cast iron pipe, as opposed to the lined ductile iron or stainless steel that we put in today.
Thank you.
Let me ask a quick question. What was the cost of the current bonds in 2008? How much are we paying a year? 2.4 million? Two and a half million?
Two and a half million.
Maybe before Peter sits down, the comment's been made numerous times before and it's, I think it's generally been applied to the electric side, but we heard it again here this morning as it relates to water, that the one-time relatively high reserves of water and electric have been squandered over the past 10 to 15 years. Can you talk about what happens to that money? Whether it's bond proceeds that added to our cash reserves or whether it's just built-up reserves that add to our cash reserves? What happens to those over the past 10, 15 years?
Thank you, Jim. I can give you my perspective, which doesn't quite go back as far as 10 years, but when I started here seven and a half years ago, we had about $2 million in reserves. We issued the bond in 2008 for $50 million. We've spent that money on capital projects that have come to you in the form of budget approval. Each and every year, they've come to you in terms of letting out contracts and moving forward. And we've tried to manage as much as we can with the money that we've had. That $50 million was spent, as we showed you in early slides, on capital projects that are basically invested into assets in the system.
So if you look at it over time, whether water or electric side, what you will find from the numbers in each annual, each year's annual audit report is evaluation of fixed assets. And what you'll find on both the electric and the water side is that the conversion of cash becomes fixed assets in the system. And I'll just draw one example of that. The relining program that Peter recommended we implement was rather controversial here on the council when it was requested. The difference in the direct service to the residents of my neighborhood alone and the water flows that have been improved to every fire hydrant in that neighborhood, they were astounding. I mean, multiples of 10 and 20 improvement in flows and pressure through the effort to remove the tubercular from the lines and line them to improve flows. That's what happens to those monies, they're invested in improvements and improved service in the community. They're not squandered. Now, unless you consider improvements in a system like that to improve fire flows, to improve reliability, if you view that as being squandered, then I guess maybe the money's been squandered. I don't happen to hold that view.
Just for the record, the water pressure in my area has not increased a bit, so I don't know if you've taken his neighborhood first and you're still, you haven't gotten to my neighborhood yet.
Oh, also note, I live in the oldest area of the city.
And you've got an old area too.
So, so the $50 million bond that was issued, the majority of that, I don't want to say majority because I don't know, but what percentage of that was used for smart meters for the water?
A relatively small percentage. The biggest portion of that went to Chevy Chase.
Okay.
Chevy Chase was 33 million.
Okay, and just for the record, that reservoir does not serve my neighborhood. It serves the neighborhood below me because the water's not pumped up. Okay, that's what I want to find out. Thank you.
Any comments?
Yeah, I have comments, I don't know. Well, I'm not, I'm not in principle opposed to ratepayers paying their share of, their fair share of the water costs that the city incurs. However, I'm not convinced at this point that the tier system that is being proposed is the, is the correct way to go about it. And I'm completely opposed to the bond issue. I think that is a no-go on my part. And what I think, some of the costs that were calculated, I have questions about, I'd like to sit down with Weldon and I haven't had a chance and go over the calculations that they've done because based on some of the, few of the questions that I asked today regarding the charts that they had, I have questions regarding their allocation of the tier percentages and all of that. But I don't want to do it here because it's kind of time-consuming and, and pretty much very detailed. But what I think, what I think we should do in terms of, in terms of capital improvements for the, for the water infrastructure is, and I want to go back to a point brought up by Mr. Milano, actually, before I go into the other issues. I don't have any financial statements, I'm looking at financial statements to CAFR from 2010. I have the budget figures currently, but I have no current operational statements from any of the departments. Very basic numbers that were presented a couple of weeks ago to the council. Outside of that, I have, I have nothing in terms of financial information except what is being presented by Weldon. I have no financial statements for, for the city and I've requested it from the first day that I got on, but I still don't have them and I really cannot make a decision based on the budget document. I have to have current financial information for me to base my decision on. Second, I want to, I want to address the issue of the transfer. Transfer, the transfers from the water fund to the general fund should not have been made to begin with. And if we actually did have a $7 million surplus for last year, what we should do is at a minimum, last year's water transfer should be transferred back to the water fund, the $4.16 million. With that transfer, I think, Peter, you can do those projects that you, that you brought up here, about $3.5, $3.7 million, those projects that were, that are urgent, that need to be done, which I agree with, they should be done. In addition to that, I think we should go back five years and add up, add up all the transfers that we've done over the past five years, approximately $20 million, and issue a note to the water fund to pay back those funds on an annual basis, on a pay-as-you-go basis, to pay it back to the, to the water fund so that the ratepayers that have paid those funds to the city for, they should have paid it for the cost of the water, for providing the water, and they did not. It was, as mentioned, it was a line item, as was mentioned by Mr. Zabos. It was a line item, it was not a cost to the water department. Those funds should be transferred back. If we had a $7 million surplus this year, we should start with the $7 million, transfer it back to the water fund and then the additional funds should be, should be paid back and the capital improvement, the capital improvements that are necessary for this community for replacing the water lines should start from there. Question from the city attorney, when, when did the Proposition 218, when did Proposition 218 deem the transfers to be illegal in courts, not in terms of the city attorney's opinion? But in the courts, when was that decision made?
Councilmember Manukin, there really isn't a decision on point that said transfer is illegal, but there have been a number of cases over time which added together caused Mr. Howard at the time to come to the conclusion that the transfers are illegal. There was a decision involving the city of Fresno, they had, it wasn't a transfer, it was called a payment in lieu of taxes that they made. It wasn't until, though, 2006, when the California Supreme Court ruled of the Bicorne decision, which settled the question, which hadn't been resolved before then, which was...
2006?
Yeah, that was when, there was still an open issue as to whether or not water rates were subject to Prop 218 in the first place.
Okay.
There have been conflicting court decisions. At that time, it was, the Supreme Court ruled that water rates were indeed subject to Prop 218. And then the subsequent issue, there were some other decisions involving both the city of Roseville and the city of Fresno, whether either transfers or payment in lieu of taxes were authorized under Prop 218. I think it's still an open issue, but the court hasn't said definitively a particular transfer like ours is unconstitutional on Prop 218, but most likely, we feel that's how a court would rule. And so that's why we, Mr. Howard advised to discontinue.
I will go to the Supreme Court decision of 2006 and that's where my five years comes in. I think the five years of transfers from 2006 and on should be paid back to the, to the water fund. And that's where the capital improvement... the Water Fund. And that's where the capital improvements should be funded. So, and like I said, I'm not opposed to the rate restructure. I think people who use more, I'm probably, in your new rates, in terms of the tiers, I'm probably around, my household is around tier eight, but, but I do agree with restructuring the water rates. I don't agree in raising rates for low-income taxpayers, taxpayers, ratepayers. I would like to revisit that and why the lower tiers were getting an increase in their rate. That is a question in my mind as well that I need to clarify. I don't agree with that, especially during difficult economic times. But in terms of the overall approach, that's, I'm still not prepared to make a final decision on what is being presented. I do appreciate what is being presented. I know there's a lot of work that went into it. I do appreciate staff's presentation and Will Dan's presentation, as well as the speakers who came up. But I still have a number of questions, and I would like to get those answered on a briefing when you guys have time. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move to the next council member for comments, I just want to clarify, Mr. Manoukian, that those rates you were talking about on the bottom of that chart were not low-income residents. It was low-water user.
I understand.
Residents, which is a very different thing.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Weber?
Well, it's been written many times in newspapers about the state of the infrastructure of this country of ours. Virtually every state, whether it be in bridges, water, sewer, highways, whatever, has deteriorated tremendously. To me, that blame rests with politicians, who over the decades have continued to pass the buck down the road. I'm not going to deal with it. Let the next group deal with it. And now we're to the point where we have bridges failing, highways failing, whatever. How's it going to get fixed? Not until politicians quit playing games and face the reality that if you want people to have water in their house, be able to drive on the freeways, go over bridges that may, that may not stand up in an earthquake, whatever, somebody's going to have to pay. You're going to look at the City of Los Angeles, that has sat there and has not done anything about their infrastructure. They're now looking at, what is it, the Sixth Street Bridge or the First Street Bridge, replacing it. Go with a new modernistic bridge. They haven't even talked about the cost yet. This city, as I asked the question of Mr. Kahounas, just on the water lines alone, decades old. Councils have sat here for 100 years. And you say, "Well, why didn't they do something about the infrastructure?" Well, one of two reasons. One, they didn't want to face reality with the public and vote to get it done. Or, there was nothing broken, so it never came to anybody's mind to do it. Look at LA, when the water lines started going, when they put on the conservation of water, blowing out lines all over the place because they're too old. Well, that has passed. Now, are they doing anything about it? Nope. They'll just let it go again and more blow up. This city has always, for the most, been proactive in doing repairs. Things we can see are the first things that we can tackle. In the case of water, you can look at the reservoirs. You can see if a structural problem's occurring inside. Unless we're going through all the water lines and checking them all out, which we do with a lot of surveys, it's low priority. It's not going to get done. But I've spent my entire life here, and I want to see that we don't pass the buck down the line, that we deal with it. And with bonding, you're getting the money upfront. You're able to make those improvements now rather than later. I see nothing wrong with that. So as far as I'm concerned, the proposed rate adjustment not only is wise, it's the right thing to do. Yeah, it's going to cost a little. People say, "Oh, it's too much." Well, I have news for you, people. If things like this are too much, then you better move to a city where it's cheaper to live, if you can find one. I know, people sitting out here in the audience laughing. But I'm getting no emails on this. I'm getting no letters on this. The people will accept the improvements to get better quality water for drinking, for getting better water pressure in their showers, whatever, in this case. They always have. So I think we hire experts to evaluate and give us the best recommendations. We ought to listen to them. I'm not going to get into micromanaging and looking at every little thing. It's as if I'm telling staff, "I don't trust you. So give me every little detail, and I'll sit with you for hours and we'll go over it, every little detail, to come back to the same conclusion, that you have told us the right information." And that's just my philosophy, my opinion. Maybe, I'd say, maybe because I'm an engineer, I think a little differently. I don't know. But I want us to do what is right for the people in this committee. It's been recommended. I see nothing wrong in it. I understand it. And I accept it. I like the 3-3-3 because I don't want to unload it. I don't like 0-0-0. And a council, five, 10 years from now, will be sitting here with no money in the capital improvement fund. Potential problems that'll occur, oh, maybe we'll have an earthquake in the next 50 years, and there'll be no money in reserve to do anything about it. I'm not going to pass that buck down the road to those people. So I'll support the 3-3-3. Thank you.
There's really two questions here that we have. One is the rate structure, the tiered system. The other is the increases, if any, that we'd like to place on our rates. So the first question, I do think that the tiered system is a fair and equitable reconfiguration of our rates, because it does impose on those that use the higher levels of water, the additional cost of that water that we get from the NWD, as opposed to the low-usage water users who are assessed what the cost is to extract the water from our ground wells. I think that is fair. I think that portion is equitable. I'm really not sure about the rates. You know, one of the issues was, well, let me ask this question. With regard to the capital improvements, and I think that's a large portion in what's driving the request for the rate increase, do any of those capital improvement projects include expanding our recycled water throughout the city?
Councilman Najarian, we have not planned on expanding the recycled water system in the next five years. There's no money in there for that.
That's not on the books. How about even going further? The bars on that chart went up to 2022, a good 10 years out, with a good $10 million of capital improvements, is in the second five-year chunk. Is any thought given to expanding it in that time period?
It's our hope that we'll continue to expand the recycled water system customers, bringing on more customers to the system that's there now, and making small system additions over time. In the next year, six through 10, we may have the opportunity to fit some small projects for recycled water system, but not the one-time large expansion that we had considered. There was a $25 million capital improvement that is not included.
Mr. Arber?
On that topic, it's been my view that the city council could look at a funding strategy, if you're desirous of improvements, that doesn't look at just the Water Fund, but also looks at the Integrated Waste Fund as well. I mean, recycled water is a result of our treatment of waste, and it's a more sound ecological means of disposing of the product of that treatment than putting it in the LA River, for example. And so it has seemed to me that there can be a justification in looking at a partnership between our water operation and our integrated waste operation, which is in Public Works, to see how you might fund those levels of improvements. That may be a topic you want to take up at a later time, but I really think that, that there is a justification for looking at that kind of a partnership, for funding those kinds of improvements, where you may not see the, the kind of business payback you would on the water side, but it is a form of utilization of the result of the treatment process, which I think can be justified, to have Integrated Waste Service as a partner, as you look at funding some of those improvements. Something to consider.
I would also add, Mr. Najarian, that we are also talking to the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power for a possible partnership, where they would buy recycled water from us, that we're not using, or recycled water projects that they're expanding. So while we wouldn't be selling more recycled water with Englenale, we also wouldn't be spending capital dollars. In that effect, we'd still be utilizing more.
Thank you. You know, because part of the rate calculation clearly is, is meeting those anticipated capital improvement project needs. And that's something I, I understand that your discussion is that we have an ongoing process. It's a main, and main-line repair that, as Mr. Weaver said, is replacing aging infrastructure that must be done, even though we don't have a specific name or location for what we're going to be doing in the fourth year or the fifth year. You know, the discussion of returning money from the General Fund to the Water and Power, that's really another discussion. But I had, I had some of my own ideas. I was hoping, being such a big supporter of a library, I was hoping, hoping to give some of that money back to the library. I was also hoping to announce the creation of a tiger team for traffic enforcement. We have a huge problem in the city with traffic, speeding, pedestrian deaths. And I was hoping that a tiger team could be implemented with the use of some of those funds that we have as a surplus. That's a discussion for another day, perhaps, but if those funds are given off to the Water Department, I think we'll lose that opportunity. I was also hoping we could use some of those additional funds that we've realized through our savings towards helping the elderly, both in their care and some of the programs that we use to help feed them, that were cut this last budget cycle. There are many things that we can do with that, with those funds, that we've realized. That is a discussion for another day. I'm not in support of just returning that back to the water, because those are funds that our founding fathers of the city dissipated and relied on in terms of bolstering some of the General Fund programs. You know, I guess, you know, if you ask me where I am on these, on these rates, I have to take the Will Dan analysis at face value. I'm not in a position at this point to second-guess them. I do have to accept the, the need for the CIP program to be funded at its current level. I do support, at some point, a pay-as-you-go, but it raises a question, where would we be with something like the Chevy Chase reservoir, that's benefiting so many residents, that was such a critical and expensive upgrade that was needed? Where would we be with a pay-as-you-go? I think we'd still be paying. We wouldn't be going yet. We would be still trying to accumulate those funds. So bonding should not be looked at as such an evil thing. I mean, as a expenditure of money at the present, based on the revenues that we can be certain of in the future. Clearly, it's a more conservative approach, the pay-as-you-go, but we just shouldn't dismiss the bonding concept as a, as an evil, evil concept. If you ask me where I am, Madam Mayor, I think I would support, as I said, the rate, the tier restructuring. In terms of the rate increases, I would like to go a little bit easier on our residents with the step-up method, which is the 2%, 2%, 4%, and 5%. I do think we need to increase the rates. I do think we need to be equitable to those folks that do want to conserve water. I wish we had artificial turf available. That's another discussion. I'm not going to get on that, of course. But the general concept that we are making efforts to those folks that want to conserve water and be relieved of the, the increase in their bill at the end of each bimonthly cycle, the opportunity to do so through the rebates, through the low-flow fixtures, through the little gadgets such as the timer, through the use of zero escaping and so forth. So I support the tiered system, and I support the step-up rate increase.
Madam Mayor, I just want to clarify on what I said, the two-part question, for the 3-3-3 and for the two-tier.
Mr. Quintero?
Okay. I support the tiered system. I think it's about time. We've talked about it for, for a long time. I think it's well-thought-out. And when you look at, at the first two tiers, I think it's quite reasonable, actually. And I think we do need to look at the recycled water component working with Integrated Waste and City of LA and however else we can do it. I mean, it's, it's time. It's kind of overdue, to tell you the truth. Now, in terms of the, of the rate increase, well, number one, let me say I don't want to go out and issue bonds. I don't think that is the right thing to do at this point. We're already paying $2.5 million a year. That's a lot of money. That, perhaps, as Mr. Najarian says, if we not done the bonds, we wouldn't have been able to do the Chevy Chase reservoir. But when you look at what we have in front of us in terms of the replacement in Adams Hill and Waste Energy Management System, et cetera, et cetera, the total cost comes to $3.7 million. And it seems to me with the new rate structure, the tiered system, and perhaps the, the, let me get the name right, and the, the step, what was it? The step-up adjustment. With the step-up adjustment of 2, 2, 4, and 5, and not issuing bonds, I think we can absolutely knock off those four major projects. And so that pretty well wraps it up for me. The rate structure is fine. A step-up type of projection, I think, is good, but I need some, I won't vote for it unless there's some assurance that we will delay the issuing of bonds. We can wait six months. We can wait nine months. We can wait a year. We can wait to see where it is that, that the city's heading in terms of the budget and what we're able to, well, we're able to project from the new, on the new rates.
Let me ask Mr. Steiger. If we uncouple the proposed rate structure and rate increase from the bonds, what does that do to your modeling and to your capital improvement projections and all of those issues?
Hey, it does a number of things. It delays the ability to bring back reserves in a timely fashion. It continues to delay the, the capital improvements while it allows us to do some. What we're doing is, and I'd have to show you, maybe, maybe Habib, you could, I don't know if it's possible to model that in your model, but, because it is worth showing. You know, at this point, to, to look at those two issues separately is still somewhat problematic. It does help to do, to do the rates, but without the, the bonding, it still puts us in a position.
But if you have more cash flow coming in, if, once this is enacted, say, and coming into the next quarter, if you have more cash flow coming in, what's the issue? We certainly have enough to pay off the bonds. Yeah, the capital improvements will take a bit longer, but I don't see that there's a crisis that, you know, if we don't do the, those big four that you mentioned, or that Mr. Kahounas mentioned, I don't see that, you know, Glendale is going to fall apart. So, you know, persuade me otherwise. I don't, I don't get it.
Well, I was going to say, and I think, I think Mr. Quintero touched on it, his approach is actually trading the ability to speed up your capital improvement program, with frankly, speeding up paying down what is the current cash deficit in the fund.
Right.
Because you will be generating more cash. You already... You already, you currently in the water operations have an operating profit, generating about $3.5 million a year, I think it was, based on the numbers we saw during budgets. So you're already generating about $3.5 million a year in net operating profit. That doesn't include any of your capital expenditures. It's your capital expenditures that have taken down your cash position, results in your balance sheet still looking okay, because you're just trading cash for a different kind of asset, but hurts you from a cash standpoint. What this proposal would mean is you'd be deferring the ability to implement a number of the capital improvement programs and projects in exchange for improving your cash position, which means you'd be reducing your current cash deficit at a much quicker rate. You could still, though, come back, as Mr. Quintero suggested, come back in six months and look at the capital projects that in fact you're not able to do, and what size of bond issues it would take to address that if there's a desire to do it. But at least it does begin to address the cash position issue in the fund, and would do that at a more quicker rate than if you had a bond issue.
Right.
But it is at the cost of capital projects.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Minaj?
Just for clarifications, I did use the word transfer when I was referring to transferring the surplus, but my comment was to return the money to the water rate, not the water, to the water fund, not transfer it, because those funds were transferred illegally. I agree with the other issues in terms of funding some of the issues that Mr. Najarian brought up, those are important issues and we can still do that, but my comment was returning the illegally transferred funds to the water fund. And second, an issue that just came up before, generating a $3 million profit, why do we need to raise the rates or restructure the rates in the water fund?
Well, as I mentioned, the surplus is generated from the basic operations. It doesn't address the capital usage that you consume every year as part of your operations. So if you include your capital depreciation in there, then you're not really generating a profit. And any capital expansion or replacement consumes your cash. So, as I mentioned, on a balance sheet basis, you may look okay, but on a cash basis, you're $12 million currently in the hole. So the water fund has had to borrow from-
Including the capital improvements.
Yes, including the capital improvements. If you did know capital improvements, it was just based on the sale of water versus the operations that's committed to get the water there and to buy the water, you actually generate a profit on your basic operations. What you're not doing, though, is you're not replacing your capital. You're not addressing the amount of capital that's consumed as part of your operations every year.
And can't we, as Mr. Quintero said, can't we improve the capital improvements at a slower pace? If we're generating a certain profit, just pay it out of the profits as opposed to, I don't know if this amounts to raising revenues or raising rates?
Well, it depends on what you want to do. Some projects, you may have to save up money for a good number of years before you can do it. We need to keep in mind that in a utility operation, where the investment in capital and those improvements may last decades, we're talking 60, 70, 80 years and beyond, it isn't inappropriate to have the future users be paying for the consumption of those assets. So you replace a major water line. That water line may have a life of 75 or 80 years, in which case you're funding its replacement over 30, which is a typical bond issue. If you save up current cash to do that, then really the rate payers today are paying for the benefits being derived by residents and rate payers 20, 30, 40, 50 years down the road. It's not, debt in a utility operation is not in the same context as a general fund debt, where maybe you're issuing debt to pay current operations. We'd never recommend you do that. In this case, is to improve the system and those improvements will last you for decades, way beyond the time it takes to pay off those bonds.
And that's why in the last meeting, I was talking about the balance between Pago and bonds, because Pago always, it sounds great, pay for everything with cash on hand, never issue a bond, but it's, you have to, as Mr. Starbird just said, who's the ultimate beneficiary of that capital improvement and who should be paying for it? There's that question as well. It's not just a financial issue, it's also a fairness issue. And do the rate payers today subsidize those improvements that are helping those residents in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, or do they also have to pay a part of that? And I think if it's a capital improvement that really, especially a capital improvement that's going to take you five years to build, there's a very strong moral reason to say this should be paid for through a bond rather than through cash on hand, which will always sock the current rate payer.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to add a couple of thoughts, because the presentation may have led counsel to somewhat different conclusions than intended. The four projects that I mentioned are not the only projects that we have in the capital program. Those are key projects that we would not be able to move forward with. That's those four. Our capital program for the year is $23 million. I also wanted to put this in a little bit of a context for timing for counsel for today. The action in front of you, as you well know, is giving us the authority to issue a Proposition 218 notice to the city. You're not voting today on enacting these rates. This would come back to you for a hearing on January 24th, after the 45 days of public notice have elapsed. And at that time, if the council chooses, you would introduce the ordinance and then adopt it a week later. At that point in time, the rate's going to affect a month after that. So we are looking at rates that would go into effect March 1. So in terms of financial situation in the utility, this effort has started months ago, and the thought was, the numbers are based on these rate increases going into effect January 1. So at this point in time, you need to know that we're already looking at, if you were to approve any sort of revenue increase, we've lost three months of that revenue increase, and we're looking at losing more of it. I wanted to be also, I wanted counsel to be very clear that if we don't have the bond, we could basically do, we cannot do any of our capital projects. And we have the compounding effect that monies that would be spent out of capital money, as I was explaining, on those four projects alone, we would have about $700,000 of salaries and benefits and other overhead expenses that would now become an O&amp;M expense, further putting pressure on whatever surplus the water utility may have had. So it's not, you know, it's not real simple and it can't all be boiled down to a 30-second soundbite, but at this point in time, the proposal that is in front of the council for four years of 3% revenue increases on the base rate is predicated on having, on issuing the bond. And at this point in time, we could not issue the bond for another four or five months anyway, because the rates would not go into effect until that time.
So is it, do you have any objection, then, to taking the bond question out of the discussion today and bringing it back in a few months, where you can give us more detail and do some modeling and we can have that discussion more fully decoupled from these other issues?
That is what's in front of you today, Madam Mayor. What's in front of you today is, should the Glendale Water and Power Department issue a notice that counsel will consider a rate increase in January?
Okay.
The reason we brought the bond is so that you're aware that the bond issue would be coming after that, and you wouldn't be surprised in any way.
And we might not, you couldn't approve issuance of bonds, but you may recall the ones you've been involved in, there's a whole series of steps, including hearings that you have to have before you could ever go to-
I have a question for Mr. Cavanas. I'm not quite clear on the $700,000 in salaries, so these are people that are currently working for GWP?
Yes, Mr. Quintero. If I can give you an example, if we have a project that needs to be planned, designed, and permitted, and we decide to do that, we decide that it's cheaper to do that in-house, we allocate salaries and all the associated costs that go with that to that total cost of the project. So for example, if it's a million-dollar project, depending on how much in-house work it would need, say 100,000 of that is salaries for our employees. If we take that project off the books, the employees still stay on the books. We still pay them salaries and we still-
Right, well, so that's my question, then. What is that employee normally doing?
Well, they're hired-
Other projects, they don't have anything to do, or what?
Right. Their work would go into a general engineering category, which would be, which is a catch-all operating expense. We would try to find something for them to do, but their highest and best use is in that, for that project in design-
How many of these employees do we have? Are there three, five, seven?
Well, the engineering section is approximately 18 employees.
And they would be the ones that work on the capital improvement?
There's also, I'm sorry.
Let me give you my answer to the question. I mean, the issue you would need to grapple with, if the water fund is not doing capital projects, you'd have to look at your needed staffing level. Over time, you'd have to look at whether or not you need the number of engineers, for example, that we need to have if we're not going to be funding capital projects. I mean, granted, there's probably a lot of work that can be done, but the budget anticipates that we're going to have a certain level of capital improvements going on, and those capital improvements are going to require a certain level of in-house staff support in order to get them done. If we're not going to do capital projects, you have to evaluate whether or not you need the staffing levels long-term that you currently have. I mean, I think that's the answer that we prefer not to have to give, but that's the real answer. You'd have to look at those staffing levels.
Mayor Friedman, I'd like to introduce Mike Bell. We retain Mike after Bill Fox, our Assistant General Manager of Finance, retired, specifically to look at this issue from an internal standpoint, and I think he has a couple of insights that he could provide.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Do have a couple pertinent comments with regard to this question. I think that Mr. Starbird has addressed it eloquently and is right on point. The recommendations before you, the 3% annual increase and the step-up increase, both include bonding as an integral part of the plan. From my perspective, and based on 30 years in finance end of this business, the situation you are in now, as Mr. Starbird described, the utility has been spending down cash to invest in resources, assets. That cannot continue. The negative balances have gotten to a point where the rating agencies have lowered your rating and kept you on negative credit watch. The discussion here about decoupling those two, from my professional perspective, would not be a responsible way to handle the situation and would, if the bonding were not to occur in the future, would create very deep cuts in the capital program, resulting in the kinds of impacts that Mr. Starbird has described with regard to the operations and maintenance. So I think it's important that it be understood that the plans that are before you anticipate both the rate increase and the bonding portions of the program. It will not work if those two are separated.
But we're not approving the bond today?
That's absolutely right.
That still has to come back to us.
But I guess my point is, if the bonding is not approved at some future date, then you could certainly expect that staff would be back with a recommendation to do more in terms of rates to keep the capital programs that would be necessary for the safe and efficient operation of the system. So my point is, and I don't mean to scare you, but the rate impacts that are before you do anticipate that that bonding would take place. If it doesn't, then that changes what recommendation the staff would make going forward.
Well, you know, let me say that, I don't know, a question addressed to you, but let me say, just in general, we don't, have we had an independent engineering company or independent engineering studies tell us exactly how much infrastructure we need and how badly do we need it, and some sort of needs analysis? No. We basically had our staff tell us that we need this group of infrastructure improvements. Is there some way we can get some outside analysis, or? I'm not talking about the finances or anything else, I'm talking about the actual engineering. How badly do we need to, the top four that were mentioned, how badly do we need to do some of the Park Manor Reservoir improvement? How badly do we need to do that? I mean, we haven't seen, or I haven't seen, an engineer, an independent engineering analysis of these CIPs. So when you use some of the terms that have been used today, well, we just have to sort of, you know.
Just, in terms of the rating agencies, I, when I was reading the report, rating agencies also mentioned, or took into consideration their analysis, the transfer from the waterfront to the general fund and the subsequent charges that the council enacted, charges by the general fund to the waterfront in their decision to put the water or the city on a negative outlook.
That's correct. They also noted that it was, is important that revenues be enhanced over time. What concerns me about the rating agency reports, as I read them, typically when they downgrade credit, they will assign a stable rating. In this case, they downgraded the credit and assigned a negative rating, which to me says, if the revenues and rates are not addressed in the near-term future, you can expect another downgrade.
Starbird?
Yeah, let me just point out that the rating agencies, in my experience and having visited with them on lots of different types of issues, including utilities, will want to look at the city council's willingness to establish a rate structure that will maintain the fiscal integrity of the operation and, over time, address the capital needs. It's both operation and capital. But their first and foremost concern is that the council will be willing to establish a reasonable rate. And I would imagine that they have seen many, many utilities, especially in the water arena, where the governing board is going through exactly the same kinds of issues that you're going through. It seems to me that first and foremost, the first priority is to have the council comfortable with a rate increase. And then, if we need to come back and do more work on capital, then we should do that. If you want to have a peer review of our own engineers' review of the infrastructure improvements that they think are the highest priority, then let's get that for you, if that's the council's will. I mean, that can be done in a timeframe of the next four to five months, which is what it would take to ever put a bond issue together. You're looking at that kind of timeframe. Yes or no? I see the finance guy saying yes. So in that period of time, if you need a peer review on the critical projects, then get a peer review of the critical projects. It'll cost you a few more dollars, but if that's what it takes for you to have some comfort that you want to support a bond issue, or you don't want to support a bond issue, then let's get that done in the timeframe that'll make you comfortable.
Okay.
First and foremost, the first decision is, are you supportive of the rate increase? Because if you're not, then we won't have a way to reasonably address the current deficit in the water fund, and I think that's the highest priority at this point.
I agree that we, today, we need to talk about the rate restructuring, the rate increase, the bond discussion, I think we should continue to have. And I'm going to suggest that it's very important that council feels comfortable with all of those investments, that they feel that any of the capital improvement investments that are made are necessary. And to that end, I suggest if it's peer review, that we look at that, but also a full report on each capital project at the time when you start thinking about the bond issuance or whatever financing that you're going to use. At Metropolitan, every single project that comes in, pretty much, we get a full report, we see photographs of the clog pipes, we were presented with that evidence, and the board decides in each case whether or not the capital improvement projects are warranted. And I think that doing the same, not just for council, but for the public, so that everybody knows what these funds are being used for, I think is important, and we should do that over the next several months for these projects. Beyond just telling us what they are and what they're for, actually showing us some of the, sort of the evidence, showing us what residents can expect in terms of benefits from the projects. And I think we should do that, and then we should have the discussion about whether we want to proceed with each of those projects, number one, and number two, how they're going to be financed. But I think today, we really need to focus on what's important at the moment and the issue that we're, the only issue that we're voting on today, which is the restructuring and the rate increase.
I just want to ask one thing. Does the NWD board take the recommendations of the professional staff, or do you ask for consultants to review what the NWD professional staff did before you make a decision?
In my experience there, which is now two years, I have never seen the board ask for an outside firm to confirm-
That's my point.
...the recommendations. But we do see detailed reports on each of the projects.
And this, this city pays good money for engineers with 20, 30 years' experience, professional experience, licensed in what they do, and I'm sure there's plenty of backup data to verify everything that they're doing. They have to. They could be, I don't know, disbarred or whatever for coming in here with false, misleading data and telling us, oh, you really don't need to do that pipe there. Look at that engineer from Caltrans or whatever, went out and falsified reports. You'd probably end up in jail. Now, we have the staff. If you want the details, ask for the details, but to hire an outside consultant, what we're doing is telling our professional staff, we don't trust them, and I'm not going there. there.
May I address that?
Listen, I, that is not a, have a seat, sir. That is not what I'm talking about, okay, Mr. Weaver? So, don't start this kind of crap, okay?
A crap?
Because you've done that for years.
I just listened to what you say, Mr. Quintero.
Uh, I have a question for, uh, the finance director. If we're paying 2.5 million, uh, on the 2008 bonds, how much do you estimate our yearly debt service will be on a proposed bond issue?
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that really depends on the rates we issue. The current issue is about three and a half to four and a half percent on the tiers in the different years, but it would probably be about the same, two and a half to 2.8.
So, the debt service alone on the bonds are gonna be at least 2.5 million on any new bond, bringing the total to about, uh, 5 million.
Five and a half.
Paying for, which, that is a yearly amount. Every year, we're gonna be basically, or the rate payers, yeah, are gonna be paying. That's a lot of money. That's all I can say. It's a lot of money.
Okay, well, we can certainly, you know, have the issue about the bonds and, um, I mean, personally, I don't have any particular investment in us selling bonds. What I'm concerned about is that if there is necessary infrastructure improvements to maintain the reliability of our water system, that we have a way of doing that. That's what I'm concerned about, whether it's Pago or bonding. I agree that we should look at these projects on a case-by-case basis and that we should have a detailed report on each project, given the economic constraints right now, and let the council and let the public feel comfortable about what investments we're making. So, I would like to see that over the next few months. In terms of the proposals, I think that the rate restructuring itself is fairly radical in a lot of ways. I know other cities have done it, but it's gonna be a change for our city. I think the take-home message for the public is that if you have conserved and you have made that effort, you should see a decrease in your water bill with these new, with this new structure. And that's what the intention is here. And if you're someone who's at the higher tier, you still have opportunities to bring yourself down in tiers by initiating conservation. People asked us the last time we had this sort of discussion to try to reward conservation and penalize those who are not conserving. And that's, this is an attempt to do that. I hope that it will work. I think that it will work. But again, the important take-home message is that even with the rate increase that's being discussed today, the average user, so if you're listening to my voice right now or if you're reading this in the newspaper and you're an average person, your bill will go down. And that's the really important thing to keep in mind, and that's what we have hired a consultant who has done extensive analysis in a way that's fair to do this. The rate increase, I think, is unfortunately necessary. I agree with Mr. Weaver that the can has been kicked down the road so many times that now we're in this unfortunate place. I don't have a huge preference about the step-up proposal or the 3%. My concern about the step-up proposal is that it's based on the assumption that the economy will recover and that the rate payers will be able to absorb that higher rate increase in a few years. I'm not personally convinced that that's gonna happen. We may be in kind of a new normal, and what do we do then when we've based our entire analysis on being able to institute a 5% rate increase in five years? Do we just say, "Well, now we're gonna be in this crisis mode where we can't increase those rates," or "What if our people are not able to absorb that?" That's a worry for me. I think the 3% spreading that increase out over time might be easier on people, but I would rather see us have a more united vote on this. I'm willing to, to go either way with that, but I would just like everyone to, to keep that in mind. Are we really convinced that in three, four, or five years, that that higher increase is gonna be palatable to people as opposed to the 3% now? Given what's happening in other cities around the state, and I do have experience with this from sitting on the MWD Board, this rate increase is nominal compared to what's happening in most other cities, who are increasing their rates far more than we are. And that's because everybody's infrastructure is kind of aging at the same time in most cities, a lot of the cities in California are, you know, approaching that centennial mark, and that's about the time when you have to replace a lot of your infrastructure. So, it's happening at a bad time in terms of the economy, but it's happening also at a understandable time in terms of the way that pipes age and the way that infrastructure changes and the way that, um, modernization is happening. I'm comforted by Mr. Steiger's analysis of the smart meter project, that in five years it will pay off its, pay itself off and start to then gain savings. So, I think that the point of smart meters is the reason that the rates are going up without recognizing that that will then stabilize and decrease rates over time is misguided. We need to keep that in mind. So, Mr. Garcia, what kind of a motion, then, do we make with this? Is it just to put out the notice or how does, do we need to decide on the-
Madam Mayor.
It sounds to me, and just if any, if I'm, if I mischaracterize anyone's position, let me know, that everybody seems to be for the restructuring in terms of going from the rate redesign.
But in terms of numbers, I'm not there yet. Like I said, I do wanna micromanage and go through the numbers and their calculations because I do have some issues regarding what they presented in terms of the base and, and the peak rates. I also wanna see financial statements.
And today we're, we're issuing the notice. So, between now and the time that the rate increase is actually voted on, you should have plenty of opportunity to sit down with them.
If it's just, if it's just for the notice, I'm okay with, but-
Mr. Garcia?
Item before, yes, as Mr. Cavunas said, and then, is to allow staff to issue the notices. We do need the, we do need at least three of you to tell us what rate structure you're comfortable with, so that rates, notice, that rate structure can go in the notice and-
Right.
-property owners that receive that will know what it is that they, they want to submit a protest. They can do that, so.
So, you have two things, the rate adjustment and the structure. And I might add to what Mr. Cavunas told you about the notice, and I'll look to Mr. Garcia to confirm this. You can always go lower, you can't go higher without going back through the notification process again.
That's correct.
So, let's say you establish a rate and you decide later it's gonna be something less than that, you can always do that and not have to go through the process again, but you can't go higher than what you contained in the notice.
And it's important that I point out, for example, if you, if you give us direction to do a notice on the 3333, when we come back on the 24th, we wouldn't be able to do the 22445 because those last two years are at higher rates. So, we do need rather clear direction on that so the notices can go out with that information.
So, the notice is specific to the amounts of the increase?
Correct, correct. Because we need to, we need to put the, the property owners on notice of what increase they're getting in each, each year.
Okay, so let's go back and just discuss the, the actual rate increase. So, am I assuming that Mr. Najarian and Mr. Quintero still prefer the step-up?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, are you-
333 for now.
You would only vote for the 3?
I didn't say that. I said for now. I don't want to throw everything out, but I'm not for really kicking the can down the road, which this would do. But I'm not gonna sit here and vote for none.
Okay.
I just, I think what the mayor was saying, Councilmember Friedman, Councilmember Weaver, was that there, two of the council members seem to favor the 2245.
I know, I, there's two more to talk.
I understand.
And I understand that you favor the 333, but-
Right.
-my concern is getting this notice out. I think that's the important thing.
Understand that, I haven't heard what-
So, would somebody like to float a motion? What sort of a motion are you looking for?
The motion that's part of the package is to allow the, the notices to go out with the rate redesign, and then there's two options. One is the 3% per year for four years, and the other one is 2245.
I'll make that motion with the 2245, and, uh, obviously, we're gonna discuss the whole bond issue scenario at a future date. So, I'll have to motion.
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Menucha?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you. Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Okay, the motion's passed.
Motion passes.
Is that it?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.